Now we're set.
The sun's out.
I don't want to play.
It's 40 degrees.
I've never hurt nobody.
Good evening.
Well, I'm on TV now. I just want to let you know. As we wait for Mr. Carr to take his place.
I apologize there, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry.
No, I bet the people wanted to see that. That was all part of it. What'd you say about a moat? Did you fall in it? I've called order Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, March 9th.
Hurts to laugh.
Lady Clerk, do you want to lead us in the Pledge of Legals?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. You're going to be able to get. I'm awake.
You all right?
Yep.
On the agenda for tonight, joint meeting with the CPC and the Finance Committee to adopt the appendix to the Financial Management Policy, Part B Town Meeting Articles Supplemental Fiscal Year 2015 appropriations into Blended CPA Fund for 2016 and the Community Preservation Budget. Budgets updates with the Finance Committee dealing with fiscal year 2015 and 2016 operating budgets, 2016 Capital Improvement Plan. At 7:10 or around there, we'll have the reading of the mail, input and updates from the public and the Board itself. At 7:30, planning updates, MAPC technical assistance, scope of work, Green Communities, Stretch Energy Code with the MAPC, D O E R, Sustainability. After that, we'll have the Housing Production Plan Implementation Update followed by the Master Plan Update. Following that, articles to be inserted on the special and the annual town meeting on May 4, 2014, followed by the Town Administrator and Assistant Town Administrator of Finance and Budget on the topics of community septic system repair, loan program borrowing, a staffing plan for the building zoning, Board of Health and the Board of Appeals. And Part C will be the Conflict of Interest Law Determination Individual of the Schools, followed by other business consent agenda, minutes approval, and then executive session to end it out. Mr. Town Administrator, any mail?
Yeah, sure, I can fill through the mail unless we wait for the Community Preservation Committee. In your packet, you have a letter from the Attorney General approving the four bylaw amendments that were passed by the November 2014 Special Town Meeting that included adding a member of the Finance Committee to the Community Preservation Committee, the bylaw and finance committee eligibility requirements, town board residency requirement, and a town bylaw regarding removal of appointed town board members. Those bylaws take effect once posted twice by the town clerk and in the case of the appointments of a FinCon member, that would take effect with the round of appointments that's coming up for terms beginning July 1st. We have also in here a news, State House News Service item brought to my attention by PJ, and that is the Governor plans program to reward municipal best practices. So something for us to think about. Actually, I saw that the Lieutenant Governor was already in Framingham touting some of their best practices, so you may want to just jump on that bandwagon and get their attention. Next is a letter from Alex submitted to the Board regarding planning for community vision and which I'd say relates also to your agenda item later on, our Master Plan Update. We have a letter from the Neshoba Valley Tech High School reminding us that it's time to make the appointment of Littleton's rep to that district. And so that's a joint appointment by the town moderator and this board and the school committee. So the moderator and the school superintendent are arranging to post a joint meeting when our members could attend also, presumably sometime prior to March 31st, which is when the current term expires. Then we have a briefing from the Mass Municipal Association on the budget, highlights of the budget that was filed by Governor Baker last week, and we'll have more about that in Bonnie's update. I can fully report on the community preservation.
I guess that's what we'll do.
That I spent, actually, I spent two hours at the Community Preservation Committee last Tuesday, and so was late, only by the last two minutes of the Finance Committee meeting, which was also in the course of its agenda discussing community preservation funding. There are two votes that the Community Preservation Committee took unanimously at their meeting last week, and it pertains to the two agenda items we have tonight. First is that they unanimously voted to adopt the so-called CPA appendix to the Financial Management Policy. That is the document that we've been working on now since December jointly between this board, the Finance Committee, and the CPC through the Financial Policies Working Group. The Working Group had unanimously recommended the form of a community preservation appendix which described how the Blended Community Preservation Act would work, the additional 2% in supplemental funds, which can get added if a town so votes to augment the 1% community preservation surcharge that the Community Preservation Committee controls. So the CPC was fine with the policy document that had been crafted. The document itself calls for adoption by three boards, the CPC, which is done, the Board of Selectmen, which is scheduled for tonight, you introduced that policy at your last meeting, and then also for adoption by the Finance Committee. The idea was that since the financial policy itself is jointly adopted by FinCom and the Selectmen, we wanted to have an appendix to the policy that pertains just to community preservation funds, not only adopted by those two boards, but also adopted by the third board, Community Preservation Committee, who has jurisdiction on CPA funds. So I would say that I bring you tonight the vote of the CPC unanimously in favor of adopting that policy document. So I think the way would be clear for the Board of Selectmen to do likewise, as has been also recommended by the Financial Policies Working Group.
When does the Finance Committee vote on?
It would have been tonight. It would have been tonight, but I guess it'll be on Friday.
We had a miscommunication apparently about who was going to post tonight's FinCon meeting.
Any questions by the Board? Motion. That the Board of Selectmen vote to adopt the proposed CPA appendix for Financial Management Policy for integrating so-called Blended Community Preservation Act funds into the town's financial policies, procedures, and processes as introduced on February 23, 2015, and unanimously recommended by the Financial Policies Working Group on February 10th, and the Community Preservation Committee on March 3, 2015.
Second.
Move in second, and all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So leave this into two articles?
Yep, and then as a further venture into funding the Blended Community Preservation Fund. For starters, recall that last November, there was $200,000 appropriated from mitigation funds into the CPA fund recreation reserve. Under the so-called Blended Community Preservation Act, a town can raise through combination of the surcharge and its own additional funds, a total of 3% of a surcharge, and be eligible for state matching funds. In Littleton's case, that means that we can put in, and we were just fine tuning the number, $254,000 was Bonnie's recalculation of how much more we can put in, $254,000 and change. We put in $200,000, and so we could put in another $254,000. The motion says 252. I suggest we, after reviewing with Bonnie, that we increase that amount by 1,500 so that the total is 254,468. And the reason is, and the reason I wanted to be clear about it, is that for a community that actually puts 3% in, there's a second round of funding, which we've never been a part of because we only get first round matching funds because we have a 1% surcharge. While we are still waiting for the guidelines to be issued from the DOR, we believe that by having a 3% total, Littleton may be eligible for a second round of funding, not just the first round, which this year got us 31%, but that all the communities that have adopted 3%, they uniquely participate in the second round of matching funds, which is greater than what Littleton has been getting. So at least to make us eligible for that round of funding, I want to make sure that the number we pick would be enough to get us at or above the 3% figure and just, in fine tuning those numbers, 254,000 and change appears to be the number to do it. Now, as we discussed last week briefly, and as I discussed at length with the Community Preservation Committee last Tuesday night, this article proposes to take funds which are earmarked for specific uses that happen to be CPA uses. One of them is housing. We have mitigation funds from a housing developer. The funds can only be used for housing, so the proposal is put them in the CPA Housing Fund because you get the matching funds in so doing. The other is the unallocated cell tower funds, which have been voted on by town meeting as being available exclusively for open space purchases, for open space acquisition. That's a CPA purpose in the open space category. So if you move them from the reserve that Bonnie has for future appropriations, you take that $143,000 from over here and you put it into the CPA fund, then you get state matching funds as a result of doing it. And then finally, in order to bring us up to the total of the equivalent of 3% total surcharge, 1% surcharge, 2% equivalent, that it's proposed that that come from, and the figure would be 60, let's see, the placeholder article has 63,100. It needs to be 64,600. That would come from the 15 Great Road mitigation funds, which are not allocated for any particular purpose, and you could move that money into a category, and the Community Preservation Committee specifically recommended that that category be historic resources. Why? Because it's the only bucket that didn't get supplemental funding. $200,000 has already gone to recreation. $42,000 is proposed to go to housing. $143,000 is proposed to go to open space, and then there was no supplemental funding proposed for historic, and so the committee asked that it be put into that bucket.
What is the 63? I'm sorry. What is the 63? What's the balance of that mitigation after that's used? Do we know that?
Yeah.
Was that part of the sale of the houses, or was that part of the actual?
Yeah, the balance, ultimately, we will get $814,000 out of that, out of the 15 Great Road mitigation. We will, by applying 200 already plus the 60, what is it, Bonnie?
64.
64. That we would have $550,000 left unallocated in 15 Great Road, with the understanding that we don't have all of that 550 in cash yet. What we have in cash so far is 350 plus, we got, was it Steve's here? We got another, I think we got another $20,000 less in cash. So we have about 200, I'm sorry, $375,000 in cash thus far, from which we would have expended $264,000.
All right. So the CPC, CPA money for the historic, you just said, it's written down here as 63.4, but you're saying 64 what?
64.6.
64.6. And that the, we got 143.62 for open space, and then we have $46,186 for housing. Is that your total? Do the math of 254, 68?
That would get us to the total.
Okay. Just making sure the numbers are right. So essentially, the $200,000 went into active recreation. There's another 300, there's another $100,000 that the 64 is coming out of? Is that what I'm understanding here? You had $300,000 total already from 15 Great Road, 200, what? I'm sorry?
We've only taken 200.
250.
For the act of recreation.
Right.
That leaves 150, 64 going into historic. The balance still sitting there is undesignedated.
That's correct, and all the future funds up to the 814,000 are undesignedated.
Okay. All right. And then you have a budget, the second article is?
And the second article is the operating budget that the CPC has recommended, and I would say that they were extremely thoughtful in, there was a long discussion about the idea of saving for the future.
So?
And not spending money because it was available. There's only two new projects that are proposed in this article. One is $8,000 for Houghton Building UV Radiation Window Protection and $18,000 for Housing Authority Heating Systems for two housing authority units. Those were requests from the Historical Society and the Housing Authority. There are no other new projects funded in that budget this year. It only pays for debt service. The only other sorts of expenses are debt service on the remaining, on previous rather.
I'm sorry, you got 69, 17, 20 for the UV. Is that a correct number? Not the $8,000?
No, it's 8,000, but it comes from two buckets. It comes from 6,817.
Yeah.
Out of historic and the balance, 1,083 out of undesignedated.
Okay. Undesignated. Any questions, Mr. Chair? Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to insert the following articles onto the May 4, 2015 special and annual town meeting warrants as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, with the form of said articles to be subject to approval as to form by town council. Special Town Meeting Article 8, FY 2015 appropriations into Blended Community Preservation Fund totaling $254,468. And Annual Town Meeting Article 8, FY 2016 Community Preservation Budget totaling $222,422.
Second.
Move in second, and all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thanks very much. Moving on to the operating budget updates.
Do you want to start with snow and ice?
Yes, please.
So I did provide a worksheet, or just a, on the back page of this packet, an update of where we stood with snow and ice expenditures. As of Friday, we had expended $512,601, so we were into the deficit by $312,000. You may remember, I budgeted for a $450,000 deficit, so we're creeping along towards that number. I know that not all of the expenditures have been captured in this. It's probably about $350,000 that we have for an actual true deficit with the supplies, the bills that haven't come in yet to be paid. Hopefully, we won't have any more snow. We have been working with MIMA and FEMA. We did compile the expenses for the first storm, Juneau, and we're estimating that, just from that storm alone, there was about $133,000 that the town could expect, if approved, to come back by way of federal aid. But since then, we've been directed by MIMA to try and compile the information for the entire four-week period, which we have done and have submitted. It includes the Juneau storm, the first storm. It's just looking at it from an entire four-week period. If all of those costs get counted and approved, then we could get somewhere in the neighborhood of $400,000 back.
Will we find out about that?
I don't think we'll know until after June 30th, to be honest. Because this is an entirely new process for MIMA to look at storms. Typically, they look at a storm as a single event with a 48-hour window of what you can count for expenditures. This is a new way for them to look at it, and I don't know, you know, how they're going to react to the request to look at it as a four-week event. So I am not optimistic in getting it, you know, before June 30th.
Any idea how they determine which communities fall into that category? Obviously, some are further off.
I think they look at it by county.
It's by county. Yeah, you qualify, your county qualifies or not, and if you're in the right county, then you can put in a reimbursement, and if you're not, you can't. And Middlesex is an apparently qualifying county, although, yeah, although it hasn't been approved yet. It is, the application for FEMA, for presidential declaration, it hasn't been acted on. But as Bonnie says, if Massachusetts got reimbursement for an ongoing event, it would be, sounds like it would be the first time that ever happened. But Governor Baker came back from meeting the FEMA officials in DC, and we all got the marching orders to re-crench the numbers, ask for it, give them the data that would allow them to put their request in, and so we've done that.
Do we expect the $100,000? If the 400, if the plan for the four-week event doesn't happen, we expect the $100,000 is pretty much a given or not?
I mean, nothing's a given, but it's more certainty than a 400,000.
And as a, and as a safeguard, what we put in the proposed warrant, or asked that you act on tonight, is an article in the special town meeting warrant, which would allow us to appropriate funds from free cash, from undesignedated fund balance, in order to pay for this unusual snow.
We've never hit this deficit level before, but this is as close as I've been at this point in the year. The closest we came was back in two thousand and ten or eleven, at six hundred and one thousand, so.
And just for your reference, and that there are motions throughout tonight where you're putting articles in the warrant, I didn't, in all cases, put the article in two different places, but they are all in item six, which has the draft warrant, and it's, if you wanted to refer to that at, perhaps throughout the meeting. There's another, another motion that's in this article, which we'll get to in a moment, in this agenda item, rather, is inserting the enterprise fund request that we now have from the water commissioners and from Park and Rec. And the details of those are contained in the, are item six, the annual town meeting.
Why would they be included in this one, though? Why are you doing snow, ice, water?
Well, because we were talking about the operating budget tonight. So you could, you can save them all up...
I know, just a question.
...to take one vote later, yeah. So, in some cases, we would have an audience here with us, like the last item, for CPA, who would, we'd want to do it while they were here, so.
The Park and Rec is scheduled to be here, right?
They are not scheduled to be here tonight.
Well, it's a motion, and this is the only discussion. I just want to see what the operating budget is for Article Five. And they're looking for, that's the water one?
Yeah.
Three million, three hundred and three thousand dollars. The commissioners voted on this budget, and the Finance Committee has seen it?
Not yet. They're scheduled, I think, to come out to meet with you at the next meeting? The Water Department?
Yes.
When's that last meeting before town meeting? This is?
Before the warrant closes.
Before the warrant closes?
Yeah.
You know, putting it on with a specific amount, I guess this is just a placeholder anyways, to yet be determined by the... The Park and Rec, has the Finance Committee seen the Park and Rec? No.
Not yet either.
Which is...
Which is not here. Which is not in this group.
FY sixteen, FY sixteen is not showing up, no.
Can you recite what the numbers are? I'm not sure why it's not in this group.
A reminder, what's the date the warrant closes?
Friday, the twentieth of March.
Thank you.
And this is the Selectmen's last meeting prior to that, or prior to that.
The Spinko's last meeting prior to that, too.
Tonight, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can give you the Park and Rec numbers that...
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And I'll recite them from fifteen to sixteen, so you can see the differences. So for the fifteen operating budget, their total revenues were projected, total revenues and available funds were projected at one million, one eighty-seven, two seventy-six. For fiscal sixteen, their total revenues projected are eight seventy-seven, eight ninety-four.
Anyone else post your meetings?
For fifteen, the salaries and wages appropriated within the enterprise fund were four hundred and sixty-five thousand. For sixteen, they will be three hundred and seventy-five thousand. For expenses, in fiscal fifteen, they appropriated six hundred thousand. For sixteen, it will be four hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight ninety-four. For fifteen, there was an appropriation for capital outlay equipment and improvements in the amount of forty-two thousand. For sixteen, it's zero, because we're appropriating some capital in the general fund. In the reserve fund, for fifteen, it was fifty thousand dollars, and sixteen, it is also fifty thousand dollars. So the total appropriations in fiscal fifteen were one million, one fifty-seven, zero, zero, zero. And for sixteen, it is eight seventy-seven, eight ninety-four. And this fits within the revenue stream.
Yeah. I found the electronic copy on the board.
So, you know, we've had discussion with the Park and Rec. Have they requested a vacancy review yet? And have they gone to the Personnel Board? They talked about looking, reviewing the director's job descriptions. Do we know if anything has been done to that effect yet?
Not yet. When I spoke with the commissioners, they were working on that. They're redrafting the job descriptions. They're comfortable with this budget, that it's, it's a reduction. It's the fifty thousand is in there, along with reduced projected revenue streams that are based on actual numbers for fifteen. But they are going forward with making some changes, and they're doing it in a very, I think, thoughtful way to try and...
Sure. I guess my only concern was, you know, you're projecting out salary wages without knowing the salary of the director.
Right.
So how is that going to fit into the whole scheme of their FY sixteen budget?
These salaries that are projected for fiscal sixteen are inclusive of the actual employees that are on staff now, with the, like, the beach wages and the wages that were spent for last fiscal year. And there's a small, smaller allowance for a salary for a director, and that covers it. So I think their goal is to bring in somebody for the director's position, and maybe not backfill a position within their staff.
Way to do it, buddy. If we must.
Same way, you do it right now.
Yeah. So there's a decrease in the, the, the Water Commissioners are looking for actually increase from two million, six forty-five to three million, three oh three.
Yeah, their, in their fifteen budget, they're about a half a million ahead of that two million, two, is it two and a half?
Two point six.
Yeah, two point six.
They're already ahead of that. They under-projected their revenue. So this three million, three point two million increase is, I mean, not increase, but three point two million revenue projection is accurate.
And they voted on the twenty sixteen budget? Yes? Commissioners have?
Yes.
And approve? Anything else? Moved at the Board of Selectmen vote to insert the following articles onto the warrants for Monday, May fourth, annual special town and special town meetings. The form said articles to be subject to approval of Town Council. Article number five, Board of Water Commissioners, FY 2016 Water Enterprise Operating Budget, amount of three million, three hundred and three thousand. In Article six, Park and Recreation Commission, FY 2016 Recreation and Community Education Enterprise Fund Operating Budget, in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight ninety-four.
Second?
Moved in second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? I mean, we'd also moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to insert the following articles into May four, 2015, any annual town meeting warrants. The form said articles subject to approval of Town Council. Special Town Meeting, Article three, snow and ice supplemental appropriation, the amount of...
To be determined.
To be determined. Well, it's four fifty, right?
Well, that's, no, that's the deficit we have budgeted now. It's just in case we go over that.
Oh.
Hoping we don't need it.
So you're thinking we may go over, you don't want...
Just, I mean...
Placehold.
Placehold, right.
Okay. Let's hope we don't have any more snow.
Hope we don't need it.
Spend another hundred fifty thousand dollars.
This weekend?
No. Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Thank you. Okay. To be, capital improvement plans.
Not the regular budget update, or...
Yeah, maybe before we move on to the capital, Bonnie can just update us on our bottom line...
The changes to the last...
...projections for the fiscal twenty sixteen.
Sure. So I've been doing a lot of work going through line items in the budget this past week and a half. We've received some preliminary, or actually, some actual information from Maya, our health insurance provider, regarding rate increases. We've looked through the enrollment data to see, you know, what our actual projected enrollment turned out to be for the number of employees on health insurance. So I've been able to make some changes to the operating budget based on those figures. And we also received some state aid projections based on House One. So the first thing is, I, as of Friday, I was showing a deficit of approximately fifty-nine thousand for fiscal two thousand and sixteen, compared to the three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar deficit that I had identified in the previous memo two weeks ago. How we make up that difference is, the health insurance budget is the primary reason for the change. We've identified two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in reductions that I was able to make over the budget estimate that I had in there for two thousand and sixteen. Part of that, about forty thousand, was because we had projected about a twelve percent increase in rates, and we received a ten point nine percent increase. And that, it doesn't sound like much, but forty thousand is forty thousand. And we're, you know, primarily, we're benefiting from the pooled claimed experience that we're receiving under Maya. So that did help, because our claims were really high this year. We also had a lower actual employee enrollment increase for fifteen than budgeted. This is kind of the first year that it's happened. We've kind of leveled off and been able to maintain it at what we've had previous. We had budgeted a six percent enrollment increase, or twenty-seven additions. The actual came in at about a two point six percent increase, or twelve additions. So for fiscal two thousand and sixteen, I think budgeting for a fifteen, you know, employee increase is a safe number. That would allow us to decrease that budget by another two hundred and five thousand, or a five percent overall increase in health insurance, rather than the twelve that I had originally projected. So it's a two-prong benefit. The rate is a little bit lower, and the enrollment is not as high as we had projected, so.
The board's been saying level staffing, so we should report...
The other thing that we've had change is Minute Man Tech. We have one student decrease in enrollment for fiscal two thousand and sixteen, so that's about a twenty thousand dollar savings. We did receive House One numbers. While some of the state aid accounts went up, other assessments also went up. So I actually came out with a loss of eight thousand dollars after I went through the, what the impact was to the general fund. In particular, the charter school reimbursement has really become more of a burden to the town. And, you know, I'd point out that I think we lost about a hundred thousand dollars more in revenue in charter school reimbursement, and then we picked up some more charter school expense. So that was the primary driver. Then, and again, I have caution, this is House One. As we go through, if versions change, my deficit could go up, it could go down, but that's where we, I think we're comfortable holding it right now where we are. The school town meeting appropriation is still in the worksheets, budgeted at seventeen million, two fifty in this version. I did share this with the Finance Committee at their meeting last Tuesday. Basically, at the meeting, that the, the last meeting of the Board of Selectmen, there was some information presented detailing a request of the town meeting appropriation, seventeen million, four fifty-five, or about two hundred and five thousand dollars more than what I have budgeted at this time. All I've done is provided to both the Finance Committee and the Board that the spending level that the school is detailing between the three accounts, and I'll go through them, could be met by using a little bit more in the school choice funds, or two hundred and five thousand more in the school choice funds. So in the last meeting, it was a town meeting appropriation request of seventeen point four million. The school choice usage was proposed at a hundred and eighty-five thousand, and circuit breaker funds at seven hundred thousand, for a total spending plan of those three accounts at eighteen million, three forty. So the proposal was put forth that the town meeting appropriation remain at the seventeen million, two fifty. The school choice usage would go up to three hundred and ninety thousand, and then the circuit breaker funds would remain at the seven hundred thousand, to keep that same spending plan at eighteen, three forty. So it wouldn't be a reduction in the budget, it's just what accounts are being used to fund that level of appropriate, or that level of spending. This isn't an all-in budget proposal or detail. The Finance Committee at their last meeting did kind of reiterate the desire to see an all-in spending plan, which would include the usage of busing fees and athletic gate fees, and all of the other accounts that are within the school's expenditure control. So I did forward that desire off to the School Department on Friday when I sent this out. And I know that the Finance Committee is going to be looking to meet with the School Committee again, and they were meeting with the Budget Subcommittee as they've been meeting following along. So I know that there's a lot of discussion that still needs to happen around this, but that's where we are right now. And I've also provided the budget update, the state aid cherry sheet proposals as provided, and the, the school actual spending from the past several years as an all-in kind of I know that's a lot of data.
Has the school been able to digest?
Yep. Couple things.
With the chairman?
The amount of eighteen point three that Bonnie's citing is not an amount that we've agreed to in any way. That is an amount that she put forward that pulls off some of the items that we have in our budget model that we've put together. You know, we understand why she's pulling it off. It's an attempt to close, you know, projected deficit. Obviously, that deficit's already being closed on the revenue side with some of the stuff that she talked about relative to health insurance. But the items that she pulled out are things that are still in our budget, and we feel we need them to do what we need to do. The, some of it might be regarded as new spending, but in reality, it's in direct response to new requirements that have been put upon us by the state. You know, additional staffing they were requesting is not to replace staff that we've let go because we just feel like the money's there, it's to put staff in place to meet mandates by the state. So the budget amount that we are still working on as a school committee is eighteen point five million dollars, not eighteen point three. In terms of the proposed strategy of using an extra two hundred thousand dollars in school choice, that's twice as much as we're projecting to use. So that's a significant increase. The problem that we initially had with that is that what we're being asked to do is to use revolving funds to fund an increase in our operating budget. And it's always been, as a town, our practice that we wouldn't do that. The idea of school choice and circuit breaker spending during the year, now, we do use school choice every year, we do budget a certain amount to be used to meet some of our salary costs, but the other monies that we hold in reserve are designed to meet unexpected increases in, excuse me, expenses during the fiscal year, which we did have this year, that's why our out-of-district costs are up. We were able to meet those during this fiscal year because we had money in reserve to do that. Problem is, is that if we put this money into the operating budget, that's not a sustainable model. It's always been the practice that we would meet those unexpected expenditures with our reserves, but that going forward, they would be put into the operating budget where they belong, and we would find a way to fund it, you know, because that's what we have to do, is, you know, pay our teachers, pay our out-of-district expenses. Given that, I mean, the five hundred and fifty thousand dollar number that's been put into the, as an increase, projected increase, and the appropriation, was always our understanding that that was sort of a placeholder baseline number to start the modeling process, and now it looks like it's really a number that we're really clutching to, it's not enough. I mean, we have, you know, between our salary increases, or contractual salary increases and increases in our out-of-district expenses, we're at seven hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase. Thirty thousand dollars for the Chapter two twenty-two, which is a mandate from the state that we have to meet, that's seven hundred and fifty K. And I think it was Alex McCurdy who kind of positioned it the last time we were here a few weeks ago, that the seventeen point four number that Bonnie's talking about is really the absolute minimum. Those are the increases that we have to meet. And to do that, not using a full appropriation and to rely on revolving funds is somewhat disconcerting at this point. You know, I characterized that as a fair statement the last time we met, and I would still say that that's a fair statement. The other things that are off to the side that pull us all the way up to seventeen point five million dollars, or, excuse me, eighteen point five million dollars, those are real items that we're still thinking about. And we have to... still thinking about. And we have to deal with one way or the other. But the fact is, is our salaries are up and our out-of-district expenses are up. And year by year, we've met those in the appropriation. That's where we're at at the moment.
So your $18.5 that you're talking is an increase over the $18,340 that Bonnie has set is your baseline? Is that what I'm hearing?
Our budget that we've put together right now, yes. That meets all the requirements that we have to meet the various mandates that the state has put through along with our contract, no, not ansum. That's the point. It's not really ansum. I mean, there's a couple of items on there that you have, you know, we have $37,000 for other expenses and $50,000 for resources in ELA and science. I mean, maybe you could consider that then sum, but that's $80,000. The vast bulk of what we're talking about is to meet our contractual obligations, our out-of-district expenses, and mandates that are being put on us by the state.
And if I may, on that $80,000, $50,000 of that is for resources. And that is, in essence, a state mandate because as the state has changed its curriculum standards over the past couple of years, our materials are almost a decade out of date, and we can't continue to use them. So even though it is, there was not a law passed in Massachusetts that says you must spend $50,000 on ELA resources this year, there were regulations passed that changed the standards, that changed the curriculum, and that we need to follow if we want our kids to continue to be able to do well on tests and be prepared for school, and also to be able to move at the, in the direction that we think they should be able to. So it's not, while it might not be classified as, that $50,000 might not be classified as a state mandate quote unquote, it certainly is something that we are required to do to meet the needs of our kids. And it's gonna have to happen one way or another. This is not our laundry list of things we wanna, we wanna fund. That would be a much longer list and not one that we've put together because we understand the tough fiscal environment that we're in. We wouldn't wanna come to the table with something unrealistic. This is the minimum of what we feel we're able to do. The minimum of what we can do to still provide a quality education to kids.
Bonnie, you don't have the 2016 breakdown yet, do you? I don't see it. Just go from the school?
No.
Do you think we could get a copy of that, that Y16 budget?
In terms of the, I mean, we're-
In a general overview of numbers, you know, it keeps going up and up and up, but-
No, actually, it's gone, it's gone down since we've initially met in that budget summit on that Saturday in the fall. We've actually gone down from there.
Okay.
So the number that we, you know, we're doing the same thing that Bonnie's doing and that the FinCom is doing, albeit maybe with a different set of tools. But we have our model in place. We know what our line items are. We initially project out what we think is going to happen. As we get farther down the line, we make changes, whether we get actuals versus assumptions. And the number that we're at right now is 17 point, excuse me, 18.5. And that's not a new number. That number, that, we were here two weeks ago, and that number, I put it right up on the-
Well, I guess, and the question came up again, Mike, you know, where is the budget? Where is the, where were your numbers?
The budget is in our budget subcommittee being worked on in anticipation of our public hearing on Thursday, which is the way we've always done it. For nine years that I've done it, that's exactly how we've done it.
Right.
Now, we've seen numbers. I've submitted numbers. Bonnie's been giving numbers by us. I've given numbers to you guys at that meeting. I was here the other, two weeks ago, and I had numbers up on the screen. So there are numbers that are there. They're tangible. They're accurate. And they are what we need to move forward.
I would also chime in that we've provided this year, I think, an unprecedented amount of data in terms of where our salaries are.
It shouldn't be that way, Alex.
I am saying, no, I'm saying it's a great thing that we-
It shouldn't be that way.
Yeah.
We all need to see the same numbers and work on this issue together.
Absolutely. And we feel, and I think that's where we've been able to find some of the savings over the past couple of weeks. And it's been a good, a good model for us this year, and we're very happy with it. We have provided a lot of data, and that data is there. That we provided with the FinCom and Bonnie and for the Board of Selectmen.
From the FinCom, Mr. Hankley, a comment?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. As far as what they're asking for a budget, we do see those numbers, but Bonnie did some analysis on the request as to what the backup added up to. And I believe it was like a $640,000 difference at that point, where what they were asking, what the detail actually added up to was about a $600,000 variance. So that's still kind of an issue going forward. As well as our response to their circuit breaker and school choice, us increasing their budget is only a direct response to how they're spending it, which last year, for instance, they only budgeted $750,000 out of circuit breaker and school choice, yet they spend $1.3 million. So what are we, what are we not to do but increase the budget that they're gonna spend out of these reserves anyways? So that's, I understand what they're saying, which is they shouldn't be spending operating expenses out of their reserves or out of revolving funds. I agree with that. But every year, they keep going deeper and deeper into the hole, or spending more and more out of these, these school choice and circuit breaker funds, and the problem's just getting worse.
The only response I'll make to that is, is that our balance in our revolving counts has actually gone up year by year. It's not going down. We are just using the money, the $750,000, we talked, the interpretation, the application of the statute has changed. We all talked about it at these tables, and we budgeted it, and we spent it the way we said we were going to. Terms of school choice, we budgeted what we felt we had to do to make our budget work last year, and we're spending it. Our reserves are still, you know, revolving funds are right where as a town, we've always said we wanted them to be. There's no risk there. I would argue that the proposed strategy right now actually would make us go deeper than we, I've ever been seen it since we started trying to build those up, without question. So it's not our reliance in terms of our strategy, Tom, how we spend the revolving funds that's really put us at risk. Because I know that our numbers are right where they need to be, and we've all accepted them year in and year out. And I don't see any problem with that right now.
So you're talking about dipping into the funds in two ways here. Talking about overcoming Bonnie's number by dipping into the funds further. And we're also talking, it's the only option on the table right now, dipping in even further to get to the number you call your bottom line.
Well, we haven't, we haven't, as a school committee, had that particular discussion yet because we're trying to wait to see where the appropriation's gonna end up. Because at the end of the day, appropriation is by far the biggest driver of how we can spend money. I mean, the revolving funds pale in comparison as a percentage of what's available to fund our, you know, school system in Littleton. So we haven't had a robust discussion yet because we haven't really gotten a strong indication exactly where the appropriation was. Bonnie's memo that came out on Friday was the first time that we've seen anything that said, hey, 550 is the best we're gonna do, and the only other way we're gonna get there is to probably do this. That's fine in terms of, it certainly, it would work mathematically. Doesn't mean it's the best strategy for the town. We're not, we have to have that discussion. But we've been waiting, as a school committee, to have a discussion about how comfortable would we be, where do we think we need our reserves to be, how much can we afford to use to meet, to get where we wanna be, even if we can't get there through the, all the way through the appropriation, which we haven't been able to the last several years, understandable reasons. But we haven't had that discussion yet because we're waiting to see, get a little bit farther down the process.
But realistically speaking, there's only two ways to get to your number. And that's to dip into the reserve more or go outside two and a half.
Or not spend it. Or not spend it.
But you've indicated that you can't go there. So.
We, what I'm trying to communicate is, is that we, the number that we put forward, I don't want anybody to think that, that as a school committee, that we've had a determination that we're okay at, you know, 18.3. Because we have, I'm not saying we wouldn't be at the end of the day. We just haven't had that discussion because our model and what we've done so far, and as far as we've gotten in this process, which is, still got a ways to go before it's totally played out, is 18.5. When Bonnie put the 18.3 number out, she was the one who pulled those things off to the side and said, gee, that looks like new spending, you know, we've told all the other departments not to do that. I understand intellectually why she did it, but that was her. It wasn't us. We haven't had that discussion yet. We may very well end up having it. And we may make a determination that, yes, we can do without this, or we will have to find a way to do without that. Or we're gonna live without that one, but maybe that one we can fund alternatively. Still waiting to have that discussion because we don't wanna be premature about it because we need to figure out where we're at on the appropriation.
Well, in all reality, what that, what you pull out or what you maneuver around is, is your purview. And what she really did was find a number to get to the number that, you know, that we would be, as a town, be able to work with. So, so I guess what I'm hearing now is that you are gonna revisit that, or you're not gonna revisit. Two weeks ago, if this is a fair characterization, you said this is our bottom line. And 20 minutes ago, you said this is our bottom line. And if that's the bottom line, then we have some creative work to do. Because we're not there. We can't do it. And, you know, under any of the budget scenarios we have now, other than the two methods that I just talked about. So, so when do we have the bottom line?
The bottom line, actually, we get determined when we know what the town makes a determination of the appropriation for the schools.
I think that, I think that true bottom line's in essence. The 18.3 is what you need to run the school system. And it's whether it's 17.2 or 17.5 in the town.
Yeah. Sorry, let me clarify once again. I'm sorry, I suppose. 18.3 is what I would characterize as our level-staffed, level-service budget, which is reflective of what we offered last year and what we, you know, without going backwards, that's what, the amount of money we would need to stay level-staffed, level-serviced. The other monies that are there would definitely be more staff, more services. We feel like we're being required to do it. We're not asking to add staff at the high school out of choice. We have credit requirements that we have to meet. But, and I'm getting a little semantical here, but to your point, I would agree that the 18.3, that is the current staffing we have and the current service level we have to provide out of district is the 18.3 number.
And without new, the new spending that we see as vital and necessary and required.
Mr. Glady?
Yeah, I have the FinCom member, participant in the school committee's budget subcommittee meetings. I have to say that, I don't know who cited some important top-line takeaways. And one is that throughout this process, I'd say the dialogues have been very productive, very cooperative, and, you know, positive in a general sense. I think the information, while we, everything we've been looking for hasn't to date been provided. Part of that is understandable, given their own internal calendar. But the rest of it, we have been getting. That being said, and that all, in addition to that, I'd say, you know, the delta here of $200,000 in the grand scheme of things historically is not huge. And that's, you know, I would think and hope that that's something that can either be addressed, you know, through further communications between the finance staff and the school department folks as a, as a means of settling on a scheme that everybody's on board with. Or, you know, we know there are changes in revenue, on the revenue side of the scheme or cost side of the scheme. We've seen that at the beginning of the meeting tonight. So it isn't as harsh as a, you know, either we take it from here or we cut there. Those are the two likely scenarios. There's also a scenario that some of the other numbers would change. But I think going forward, that the things that have been helpful to us as we get them in the process, it would be that much more helpful if we could get them earlier in the budget year. And I'm not blaming anybody for that. A lot of this is inherited processes, but the, whether it's the real, you know, the prior year actuals or the projected line item spending, as they say, they work on it right now, heading toward a date of doing a school committee presentation of their budget hearing. I'd just hope that maybe next year's process, we get that part of it done a lot earlier. That being said, I think the work and relationship has been terrific. I think their asks are reasonable, and I think the delta is small enough that we shouldn't get hung up on it. We oughta just encourage the finance director to work with the school to hammer out that number.
Thank you. Bonnie?
I just really, I really appreciate the information that the school committee's provided this year. It's been very helpful. But I do wanna caution that we're at the point in the year now, I don't have any other accounts that I have in flux other than state aid. And, you know, I really went through that health insurance budget and eated out everything that I could get. We have new growth pushed at a maximum of what I think I'm gonna capture with all of the new housing developments and the commercial. I don't see getting a large savings any other, in any other account.
And that's based on the 17.250?
Correct.
As the appropriator.
Bonnie, Mr. Hankley mentioned that you discovered $600,000 or $640,000 in discrepancies.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that they were discrepancies. But in going through the line items, there were some savings that, you know, needed to be recognized from retirements. There were some staffing additions that were able to be called out. And again, I appreciate the information that was provided. Health, not health insurance, in looking at the special ed, out-of-district costs, there was a difference, a small difference there, too. But all total, when you looked at what the original request was, which was $1,130,000, I think, coming down to the $700,000 number now that we're looking at, there is, you know, there is a difference. But a lot of that was not discrepancies. It was staffing additions that were pulled out, some changes in special ed, some additional expense programs that were taken out because I was following the level-staffing model. So.
So this is Bonnie, very iterative process with the school committee in helping determine actual spending this year, projections next year based on some things that had not happened when you had the original conversations?
Correct.
Okay. So you characterize it as you're working numbers and coming to a more appropriate resolution versus discrepancies?
Yeah.
Right. After, after being able to review the raw data.
Correct.
And it was Bonnie's analysis, which we got two meetings ago. The schools had a chance to respond to that, and we're understanding what each other's numbers are, and we're coming closer. And the, and the difference right now, as has been said, is between this, if I'm following correctly, Bonnie, this scenario, which is, which is Bonnie's calculation where, where for a town meeting appropriation of $17,250,000, that it would require use of circuit breaker funds for $700,000, school choice to $390,000. And compared to the column next to it, which is what I was hearing-
What was presented at the last meeting.
Yeah. Which is pretty close to what Mike was saying now, I think. The difference is $205,000 between the two columns. So that's, $205,000 is the number that separates us right now from.
What I'm worried about is, you know, we're gonna close the line, and that takes, you know, does things with our options. And, you know, whatever number you come up with is your number, but how we address it, as time goes on, becomes more and more limited. You know, whether we agree or don't agree, I don't think that matters at this point. We have to come up with a budget. And one way or another, we have to balance it. And I think I wanna make sure that, that you all understand, we have nothing on the town side to work at here short of eliminating people. And so that, that's why I'm pressing is, yeah, the information's been good. Time's running short to be able to deal with this and, and figure out the best way to deal with it.
Just to ask, just a consensus of the board, do we feel the 18.3 is a reasonable number? I mean, do we have problems with the number after all the analysis that Bonnie and the school committee?
Yeah, I think, I think the question is, the portion that we have a say in is the town appropriation. I think more appropriate is the 17.250, the appropriate number the town appropriate to the, to the school. I mean, that's, the 18, the 18.3 is based on, you know, a budget that they built or in the process of building and looking at. But I think we're responsible for the 17.25. They had requested the 17.455. So, you know, that 205 delta is something that we need to-
The reason I ask the question because we could close the delta right now and say we don't believe the 18.3 is right. It's 18.1. But does anybody on this board feel that? Do we think that bottom line number of 18.3 is appropriate? And then it's three general sources of how to fund that: town appropriation, school choice, and circuit breaker. So is anybody disputing the 18.3 in terms of that number?
I don't, again, my concern is the town appropriation, PJ. You know, I think that-
Well, our concern is the entire number, I believe.
Yeah. Well, well, that's a school committee. I mean, they build their, they build their budget based on, as Mike said, the town appropriation. And that's what they're looking for guidance on. What is the Board of Selectmen Finance Committee gonna recommend as a town appropriation?
I think they base the budget-
Now, if it's a 14, if it's a 17.25- Now, if it's a 14, if it's a 17.25, then they, they need to do some work and figure out what, what that means. Or if it's a 17.455, what does that mean on the town side? I mean, I get where you're going, and I understand $18 million is what it's going to take to run the school, but right now, we're talking about the appropriation. I, I believe my concerns are the appropriation from the town.
Okay, so, don't dispute the 18.3. I just want to see if we're clear on that number first. Because if we believe that's a bad number, we have to go back to the school committee and say, you need to sharpen your pencil and come up with a different number there. It's just as to what bucket of money does it come out of is our debate at this point.
Well, I think that's. I think that's, that's based on the town's appropriation, too. I mean, you know, whether or not we say the 18.
All right, what a circular argument here.
It is, it is. I agree. And it's.
Purposely so, Jimmy. But that said, what's the risk of using the circuit breaker, excuse me, the school choice fund to close this gap?
The risk would be twofold. One is, is that if we have unexpected expenditures during the fiscal year, we're limiting our ability to deal with it because we're going to bring that balance down lower than we've had it in quite a while. You know, we used to be able to kind of hold two reserves. We used to be able to hold school choice and circuit breaker. Now, we don't do that. Circuit breaker is budgeted from the get-go to be spent, and it's allocated accordingly. So, it will be lower. The other thing is, is that, you know, if there were other things that the, we felt we needed to do, we're being limited. We're not going to be able to have that flexibility that we've had in the past. We haven't used it, and we could, we could go spend all the school choice right now. We could put all right in the budget, go right down to zero, if we all agreed that was a good thing to do. And we'd find plenty of good ways to spend the money. There's no question about it. There's plenty of things that we're not doing that we would love to do, but I don't think anybody here is going to advocate, not least of all us, that that's a good strategy.
Where does the school choice money come from?
It comes from kids that are coming from other districts into Littleton. We also pay money out when, so that you have, if a student leaves the district to go to a private school, that's a net zero to us. It doesn't make any impact on us at all. If a student leaves to go to a charter school, that has a negative impact on us. As a town, we pay for that. And that's more onerous even than, than school choice. But there's nothing we can do about that because we don't have charter schools to get the money back. School choice, if a student leaves to go to Westford, we pay out of our budget to do that. If a child from, two children from Westford come back to Littleton because they think it's better over here, we would be in a positive delta situation, which is exactly where we are. We do have students that have left Littleton, the school choice out, but we have many more children coming in, so we're at a net positive. It's a good thing for us to have a good school district that's attractive because it makes more people want to come than, than want to leave. And we've benefited from that in all the nine years that I've been here. We've been running at a positive, and we've, I think, done a good job of analyzing the impact on attracting other students into the district and taking them in based on the impact it has on the kids that are already here, but with that extra money being added in, we feel it's a net positive, and I, it's been a good way to do it, and it's helped us quite a bit in terms of, again, being able to meet unexpected expenditures, but also, you know, we have used some of that money year in and year out to offset salaries that we wouldn't have otherwise been able to do. When things were dark, they would have been darker.
So, the quality of the education system in Littleton is attracting more people for various reasons than leaving.
It would seem that if people are voting with their wallets, but I think it would be hard pressed to refute that.
Michael, is there a time where we can't offer school choice because of the size of our classes?
I mean, it would, there are contractual obligations in terms of students in classrooms, you know, that's in our collective bargaining agreement. We would probably stop before that anyway because we, again, when we do it, we think about, how many kids is that going to add to each grade? And we do it grade by grade. We don't just, it's not a flat number. It's grade by grade. So, the years that we've done it, we've said, okay, third grade, we're going to add four, fourth grade, we're going to add three, fifth grade, no, we're already capped out. We don't feel it would be a healthy thing to do to add more, so we're going to leave that one the way it is. And we go through it year by year like that, so.
So, I believe the crux of the reason that there's a risk here, and that is, if our choice numbers are limited because of space available, and space availability is going to be somewhat restricted coming forward here with the 40B project coming online and expecting children from there to fill some of the seats, we may not be able to have as many out there. And if we bake this in the budget at some point, which is the suggestion tonight, now become dependent on that as we go out into the future, that money is not there, but the baseline is already established. So, there is a much larger delta in town appropriation to the needs of the school district. And as long as we understand that, when we're making some of the decisions, we'll make those decisions. That's why we're here. But I think we need that background.
And that was the, one of the points I tried to make earlier tonight, was historically, we've never done this. Historically, when the budget has gone up because our expenses have gone up, when we've been able to meet those unexpected expenditures through the use of revolving funds, we've always made it whole as a town going forward on the appropriation because, you know, especially with circuit breaker, it's not a dollar for dollar. If we, if our dollar, if a dollar goes, if our out-of-district placements go up a dollar, we don't get a dollar back in circuit breaker. We get much less than a dollar. So, we just can't keep doing it like that. We have to find the money if our expenses keep going up.
I just wanted to clarify, the, the school choice spending costs are actually borne by the town side. It's, it's not netted against the school choice in accounts. So, the school choice in money received goes directly, as a direct spend for the school department, and the choice out is charged to the town's general fund.
Mr. Coles, did you ask? Mr. Vallet, I think, kidded the point, I was going to say, to answer his specific question of Mr. Fontanella, downside to spending that down is in the future. I mean, FY17, if we spend down the funds, we're going to be in a deeper, a deeper hole. So, I think that was just what they pulled like, and PJ just.
Thursday, you have your presentation?
Can I ask you a question, Paul? You asked for the feeling of the board, where they are with the number. Did you get an answer?
Well, I would offer Jim gave his answer. I had a lot of work in NATO, North Atlantic Treaty Organization, silence was always consent there. But seriously, if you think you had an answer, I'd certainly appreciate your answer at this point.
I'd like to hear what all the board members have to say, but I don't question that you need that money. That, that's not, that, you know, I'm not there. Where I am is, I don't want to cut police officers, firefighters, and some of the other services to meet that number. We've done, on the town side, a really good job at keeping a rein on things and trying to control this stuff. We've had mandates, too. And, you know, we've had service increases that are required, particularly with the police and fire department. They have to go. They have to do it. And so, we've done a good job with doing that. So, I don't argue with the number. Number's fine. It is, it is what it is. I just don't know how we're going to get there because we can't take it on our side.
I'd say that's where I'm at. I'd agree, yeah. And I know the, I mean, what you guys described is you got to make that other number, and I get that, too. I don't know how to get there either.
Relax, Mr. Chair. I agree with what you said, but Mr. Carter, it's the truth. The number's there. From the town side, we have a problem, so I don't know where we go from here. I do like the idea, Mr. Chair, about the finance committee's suggestion with Bonnie, you know, sitting down and with the school and their finance team and Ash finance team just to see what we can come up with, you know?
Which is all we've announced for tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
What time's your budget hearing on Thursday?
The 10th budget I've been involved in now.
Seven o'clock Thursday night.
With the town. We've had the same sort of stuff each time.
Post it.
Close the gap, well, forget that.
Mr. Hinckley, quickly, let's move on.
Yeah, a couple of quick notes, and just to change what I said earlier, I'll rephrase it as accounting variances, but Bonnie and us and finance committee weren't able to notice these accounting variance as well, getting some more detailed budget information from the schools, which in the past we hadn't had, such as retirement savings. It was $75,000 in one year, and, you know, over a four or five-year period, that's $300,000, $400,000. But I also wanted to say that when we look at a level services budget, it's hard to do that when your largest department in town doesn't give you any staffing levels or how many employees they have or any details. So, it's hard to understand where the yearly changes are. So, when you start getting that detail, myself and, and, you know, fellow finance committee members as well as you folks and Bonnie, we can, we can understand the detail, and we can, we can identify where things are different. Without that detailed budget, as we didn't have in the past, we weren't able to do that. So, just in this one year, those accounting, accounting variances, as I'll rephrase it, have already been, you know, identified as saving the town X amount of money. I'd also like to make a couple of quick points on school choice and circuit breaker, just to, this year FY15 estimated $878,000 in school, uh, circuit breaker, and estimated receipts of $400,000 in school choice. So, that's, this year alone, FY15, that's about $1.278 million that they're bringing in, and they budgeted only $750,000 for 15. So, no wonder they grew those balances on those accounts because, as we've been talking all along, what they budget, what they actually spend, what they actually bring in are three different things. Looking at 16, they're estimating $700,000 in circuit breaker, $400,000 in school choice, $1.1 million, and they only want to budget 750 or whatever it's going to be. Bonnie's $17,250 gets to about $950,000, I believe, so that still doesn't get to the $1.1 million that they're bringing in for new money next year alone, which doesn't tap into their $1.3 million combined balance, ending balance for circuit breaker and school choice. So, they got $1.1 million coming in in 16, they got $1.3 million in a beginning balance, and they only want to budget 750,000.
Mr. Chair, two quick responses. First of all, in terms of retirement, we find that every year, just go back through our budget presentations, which are online year by year. Every year, there's a line item in there. We don't hide the retirement savings. We put it right out there in black and white. Everybody sees it. We've used it in the past. It's a good number. It's a good way to think about things. So, that's not a revelation. Second of all, we don't budget all of the revolving funds because it was always in agreement with the Board of Selectment, the finance committee, and the school committee that that was not a good strategy. It's not our choice not to do it in vacuum. It was a conscious, debated choice by all three boards, so.
I think we can agree on that.
At this point, we'll let the finance department, the school committee work, you know, moving on to 2B. Capital movement plans.
The board has not yet voted to insert the capital article. You had made your recommendations. It was reviewed by PNCOM. They get their meeting last week, and I think it's ready for insertion.
I know that when I did meet with the finance committee last week, they didn't vote to make any recommendations. I don't know if there are any. Sorry, in the article that I reviewed last week.
No, Paul, you know, do you want to talk about the capital, about the, the capital plan?
Well, I know that the master plan specifically is going to be addressed later on in the evening, but an article to fund consistent with, you know, our, our plan of putting in another $100,000, which was in our plan as recently as January for the master plan. I, I know the discussion on that will come up later in the evening as scheduled, but thank you, Betsy, for bringing that up. I want to make sure that we have the means through a, an article, place saver, to make sure we, you know, are able to fund the master plan with the appropriation.
We have, what, $50,000 already appropriated for?
$113,000.
$113,000. So, if you needed, if you needed another $100,000, the only place, I think the only place you can get it is by reducing the capital stabilization appropriation from 350 to 250.
Well, at the time we discussed it in January, it was on the list of a number of capital items, and there was no prioritization that suggested that the master plan was at the bottom of the list. Subsequent to that, when we were, we were happy to receive the news that the capital stabilization fund was going to be funded, and I believe $350,000, which we all supported, we asked, did that come at the expense of any program? And we were told, no. So, now it was a surprise last week to find out that virtually everything else in the capital list was getting funded. Kudos for that, but that, for some reason, the master plan funding at $100,000 was being dropped off. I understand there's an alternative scheme to address it, not adequate, not equal, and I would suggest that the $100,000 that was available for it in January ought to be available for it now.
I think we should have a spot on, on an article so that we can do it. We can, we can even pull it from mitigation money if we need to, but I don't think we should. We identified the master plan as a number one priority. It ought to be a number one priority for what this town does, and we shouldn't be forced in a position to fall back and say, well, okay, we need a dollar's worth of work, but we got 50 cents to do it. And, you know, the next 20 years of this town fall on this master plan and how we do it. So, I don't think we should have dropped it out of our planning scheme, and I think we should leave our options open, going right to town meeting to be able to fund it.
You know, I, I, I'd, I'd, I'd agree with that. I mean, if, to put a placeholder on it, and I think we all agree it's going to be more than $113, just the scope of the, you know, yet to be determined scope, I should say, because the, the committee hasn't met yet. And I wouldn't be opposed to knocking the capital stabilization down to 250 from 350. I mean, a quarter million dollars going into a stabilization fund is a nice chunk of change still, and to fund the, the master plan.
Well, we, we still have time to work on that, but we need to put the article in.
Right.
Need to put the article in with a dollar amount.
Right. So, that's.
So, if you wanted to put the $100,000 in, the capital, you should vote to do that tonight, and then we can reduce the stabilization by that, that amount.
Okay. I mean, the money's there. It's just moving it from one pocket to another. Anybody else? All right, so, moving that the Board of Selectment vote to insert the following articles on the May 4, 2015 annual town meeting warrant with the form of said articles to be subject to approval as to formed by town council. Article seven, capital projects, FY216, 2016 capital items from available funds, $1,700,811. Articles 12, capital stabilization fund, with that increase being $100,000 for the master plan. Article 12, capital stabilization fund of $250,000.
Second.
Moving to second, are all those in favor? Okay, sorry, you're right.
So, do we have to have a separate article for the master plan, or can it fit in?
No, we'll put it, we'll put it in as item 6C, master plan update $100,000.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All right, those opposed?
Great. Last second.
Okay, late in the evening, but it's now open for public input if anyone has anything. Nothing in public against what, what? I'm good.
I have just two quick things, what happened last week. So, on the 25th, LCTV hosted an open house. It was a great day and night where folks could calm down, see behind the scenes of what LCTV is all about. And if you didn't get a chance to come down there, it's really, really cool. It got a situation and a setup that you probably wouldn't believe, and a lot of great volunteers and hardworking people down there. So, thanks to everyone that came out. Thanks for all that called in. There was a hotline and prize giveaway. Gagoo called in. It was a, it was a good time. So, thanks to LCTV for that. And this past weekend, on the 28th, we had our annual Littleton chess tournament, and that was a big success. Lots of folk came out, all ages, even saw Megan Rank, her son Tim, play. That was great. Independent did a great write-up to thank them, thank you to them for that, and thanks to Alakima.
Who's the champion?
Lawrence Gladding, who's a very experienced professional chess player. But we have categories. There's elementary, female, senior, all different, so, great day. I had the pleasure of co-hosting with my father.
Fantastic. Mr. Craig?
Nothing.
Okay, then we'll move on. Item 5A, MAPC technical assistance, open space recreation plan, green communities application approved.
Okay, a couple of weeks ago, I announced that the Metropolitan Area Planning Council was awarding the town $15,000 in technical assistance for two projects, and I reviewed the scope with the affected committees. The sustainability chair reviewed the, the scope for preparing the green communities application, and the open space and recreation committee chair reviewed the scope for updating that plan.
So we have a form of a letter agreement for the Board to approve, uh, as our contract with MAPC, to have them undertake those scopes of work, which would then commence, uh, the technical assistance we get is in the form of, of staff support from MAPC.
That's the letter from, from Mike?
Yes, mhm.
No comments, I do look for motion. Moves that the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize execution, a letter of agreement with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAPC, for technical assistance to the town of Littleton for one upgrading, updating Littleton's Open Space Recreation Plan as requested by the Open Space Recreation Plan Implementation Committee, and two, preparing a Green Communities Act application as requested by the Sustainability Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. Green Communities Stretch Code Adoption Insert Town Meeting Article.
That is the very first level of analysis that's, that's done under our, um, assistance, technical assistance for green communities. We have, um, a, uh, we recognize first off that the state Green Communities Program has a once a year, and I should introduce, we have Kelly Brown from the, uh, Green Communities Program, Department of Energy Resources, and Cami Peterson, who is MAPC's, uh, manager of the, uh, energy program. So, thank you both for, for, for being here. Um, the Green Communities Program has one, uh, certification round per year, and typically it's in October, and typically it's in late October. That usually runs, means that for a town that holds their town meeting in November, if there's any town meeting action you need to take to put, to have your application in order, you need to take it before, sooner than November. So we made an initial, uh, look with Town Council's assistance as well on what are the criteria, what are the, uh, certification standards that do require town meeting votes? And those standards are, fall basically into three categories, two of which are satisfied by our existing zoning bylaw, uh, and that, and Kelly's, uh, department has certified that, that Littleton's zoning bylaw as it, as it currently exists meets the two of the five criteria that are set out there. Uh, a, a third criteria, which is number, number five, uh, is the adoption of this so-called stretch energy code, which, under the terms of the 2008 Green Communities Act, it is a requirement for a community to vote to adopt the so-called stretch code, uh, which, uh, which from the, from the view of history, the stretch code that existed at the time in 2008 was a higher standard than what the basic building code is now, as, as, as it's been explained to me by our building commissioner. Uh, and, and so, and because we're not one of the first communities to go after green community certification, where there were 136 that have come before, meanwhile, the basic, uh, building code has come a long way, maybe, that it, it, many of the energy standards that existed as a stretch in 2008 are now embedded in the basic code. I had a recent conversation on Friday with Rich Crowley of our Planning Board, who sits on the State Board that adopts building codes, says that they're, they're, uh, they're about to, uh, take, uh, certain redundancies out of a so-called stretch code here and a basic building code there. Uh, I will leave that to Rich and to the state agencies of how they're gonna fix that, but the bottom line from Rich, who could not be here tonight, but we have Roland, Roland here, to essentially say that, um, if you don't adopt the stretch, if a community doesn't adopt the stretch code, you're still gonna have that as your standard because it's in, because it's in the building code. The only difference is if you don't adopt the stretch code, you're not eligible for green communities funding. So that there is, so there are certain words we have to encant in order to get the, the genie to give us 140,000 from, from applying for green communities funding. But, and I know Roland and I have been talking about this program for about at least six years, six or seven years, and I know that at the time the green communities was first adopted, or, uh, or was first enacted, it was a stretch for a community to adopt the stretch code, uh, and that if Littleton had adopted it, you would have been on a different, um, uh, there would have basically been a different standard between the stretch and the non-stretch communities. Now that, if I'm understanding correctly, it's virtually gone, uh, gone away that the, that the embed, that the basic building code is the, uh, does all the things that the stretch energy.
We adopted the 2012 code, we essentially adopted the stretch code, um, so they're running parallel to each other with minor differences, which Rich Crowley probably referred to, um, which I'm, I'm sure the state will work those details out in the future, uh, but we are essentially right now the stretch code, without calling it a stretch code.
Are there any differences, Roland, because I work in the community that has a stretch code, I know from the outside when they're framing it, they have to use zipboard and tape and...
We do that now.
You do that in town now?
We, we have to, we have to meet certain, um, blower door tests or infiltration tests, so you have to gasket everything.
A 30 pipe comes in and does that?
That's correct. You do it with the stretch code, you do it now under this code.
So I guess the other question is, back in 2008 or in the, in the past, you know, you'd always hear a comment from builders sometime that, if you adopt the stretch code, the cost of my house is gonna go way up. That's not the, the case anymore.
Well, we had the 2009 code, which they set the bar at a certain level, which was difficult to achieve, and we achieved it, and last year we adopted the 2012 code, which they simply raised the bar. So you had to make your houses tighter, you had to make them more energy efficient, and you had to have, um, higher R values, higher U values, um, you had to close in your house a lot better. So that, all they're doing is raising the bar, but essentially we're using the stretch code now.
Are there any differences with components, like furnaces or hot water, do they have to, is there an increase in those two as far as efficiency goes, that they have to be met?
It's a formula, so if, if you want to increase your thermal value of your entire shell, you can reduce something on your, let's say, heating system or your hot water system. If you want to make those units, those, um, the boiler unit, let's say if you want to make it more efficient, you can reduce it elsewhere, let's say your U value or your fenstration value or your windows. But it's a formula that you fill out, it's a, well, you, you know, Joe, it's the RES check, or something similar to RES check, or the HERS rating, which we will move towards if we adopt the stretch code. It's a, it's just a different checklist. Yeah, so he's done a great job of kind of explaining the differences.
One of the biggest things is people have seen the history with the stretch code, so back when a lot of communities started adopting it in 2010, 2011, the new base code wasn't out yet, so it was a stretch. There was the stretch code, and then there was what everyone was following was the base code 2009. And then as 2012 came out, it caught up really in a lot of ways to the stretch code. It put in, you know, blower door testing, a lot more performance testing. Um, the stretch code still does a whole house performance test, which is why you have some trade-offs, where the base code is there in a lot of ways, but it's prescriptive, so it's more telling you what you need to do down a list. Where the stretch code does allow you, because you're trying to get that one rating, like, you know, how you buy a rating and your car uses so many miles per gallon, and you buy a fridge and it has a certain rating on it, well, that's kind of what the stretch code does. Where the base code has a lot of that in it, and has gotten very close to it, but it doesn't require that whole building rating. It has an option to do that, but it's not required.
And Kelly has, you have someone who is available to come to a community and lead the discussions about, and it's been, you know, we talked about setting up something particularly for builders and others who are, deal with the building department to, and you've got someone who can come here in the next month or so.
Yeah, so my suggestion would be is if you choose to put it on, on the town meeting warrant for vote in May, the next step is really to have, we work with ICF International, they're a consultant of the Mass Department of Energy Resources, um, and they run the Energy Star for Homes program, and Mike Berry, who ones the program has done, um, has been with us since the beginning of 2010 and done a lot of presentations on, what's the stretch code, what's the base code, how does it not just affect, um, new construction, but renovations and additions and such, and, um, all the communities that I've had in, in the central region that have adopted the stretch code have all done an informational session, whether it's at a Board of Selectmen meeting, or just, you know, on a, on off night where it can be taped hopefully and, and put out there for the people that are gonna be voting on it to understand, um, what they would be voting on at, at the town meeting.
Great. Thank you, thank you for that. Then also just want to mention that in working, not only working with Kelly's office, but also with Cami at, uh, MAPC, we've also been working with the, uh, with the Littleton Electric Light Department, who have been extremely supportive. Uh, it was a combination of Kelly and, uh, and working with Scott Edwards that even allows us to be here tonight, because one of the, one of the reasons why Littleton didn't even approach adopting green communities until now is because we are a municipal light plant community with our own electric department, and for those communities, and about 40-some, uh, uh, light plant communities, you can only pre-qualify for green communities if your Board of, of Electric Light Commissioners has willingly accepted a surcharge, which essentially sends money from ratepayers to the state, but with no guarantee of money coming back. Only four out of the 40 odd, uh, light plant communities ever did that, the others didn't. However, there was a ruling issued in 2012 from, by Kelly's agency that said, if you are served by both, if your community is served by both a municipal light plant department and an investor-owned utility, then you don't have to adopt the surcharge, you can just come in the front door. And because we have three, three residences in Littleton that are served by an investor-owned utility, we qualify, uh, for the, for the, coming in the front door. So, wanna thank Kelly for her efforts in working with her Electric Light Department. Concord did it, uh, and, and found that we, we are still looking, if anyone's watching, if Boxborough, who is served by our municipal light plant, has not yet found its one, and we only need one, uh, entity that, customer that's served by an investor-owned utility, but that would qualify them.
Can we thank those three?
So it's along the distribution line, so it's common sometimes to have customers of National Grid or N-Star when the distribution line is between the two towns, so they found that in the case of Littleton and other communities, that there are customers served by, that are right along the border, that might be located in Littleton, pay Littleton taxes and a resident of Littleton, but actually are serviced by the utility in the border.
Yeah, coming in through Westford in the case of those three. So thank you for all your help in that, thank you Cami for your...
I would ask that if we do vote to put this on the warrant, is we get a bit more detailed briefing with some slides that clearly illustrate, because what I've heard tonight, there were two corroboration actions to require this and to get any of the money back from the state. One was the surcharge you mentioned, that the public utility, the, um, municipal utilities would have to attach to the bills, those ratepayers are paying it, and then receiving some of that back.
Which we do not have to do.
I know, you don't have to do that.
Yes.
But that was one corrob, and just through a quirk of three people who happen to live in Littleton, that for whatever reason, receive it from an investor-owned utility, we didn't have to go down that road. And the other is that it was coercive in the law, is that to receive any, or to participate in any of the grants that are mentioned in here, of the millions of dollars, again, you had to address the stretch code.
Yes.
Roland mentioned it's essentially the same, I'd like to know what's essentially different. And I think, Kelly, you started to hit on that. These are things that need to be clearly delineated, rather than just speaking it out at town meeting, and people trying to digest the information, so that if it goes out as sort of the information in the packet that we send out, so it's a bit more detailed, and then also illustrative in that, so we have the right people give the presentation, if it's Roland or whoever, uh, that evening, to show the pluses and minuses of this.
Kelly said that we, we, we would have a presentation made.
Yep. We have, we have a, um, a consultant that works with us, that's worked with us since 2010, and offers informational sessions to kind of show the difference between the base code and the stretch code, allow residents and, um, people to come and kind of learn more about it, because it's a, it's a bigger topic, it's something that could just be discussed usually at a town meeting, so I'd be happy to set that up for you.
See, and we know what happens with information meetings for the most part, as city.
And we, and we can arrange to have that, that on the LCTV too, which has been a good way to get information out, and we do have representatives from the Sustainability Committee.
But as I was saying, as I was saying...
Sorry?
No, it wasn't you. I did apologize for, Mr. Chairman, is that at town meeting, I think it would be appropriate that we have, whether it's a pared-down version or something, that clearly explains this, so folks understand what they're voting for.
Okay.
And that way I can support putting it on the warrant.
Absolutely.
All right. To hand up over here?
I was just gonna add, from MAPC's point of view, this is part of our scope of work with the town of Littleton, to help prepare both the workshop with the Department of Energy Resources, we've worked with several towns that have brought in this workshop with the ICF consultant, and it's been very useful for the city or town, so help prepare materials for that, whether it's PowerPoint, or printed materials, or emails, or however the town wants to go about it, as well as for town meeting itself, that that's part of the scope of work that we've designed.
Thank you. And from the Sustainability Committee.
And I'll just add that, uh, most of the towns in this area have already adopted it, so that's kind of good to know, too.
Do you want to identify yourself, so people know who you are?
Oh, Tracy Cutter, from the Sustainability Committee.
Thanks, Tracy. Go behave, kid.
Oh, and I, and I just mentioned Jack Applebaum, but on my first week here in 2007, Jack came to talk to me about what we were gonna do about, um, green energy. Uh, Jack is in charge of Littleton's Climate Action Network for a long time.
I'm happy to say that things are slowly moving forward, very slowly.
Right, thank you.
Anything else?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to insert onto the warrant for the May 4th, 2015 Annual Town Meeting on an article for adoption of the Stretch Energy Code to address Criterion Five of the Green Communities Program, subject to approval as to form by Town Council.
Moving to second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Thank you. Thanks, Roland.
Five, housing production plan implementation, an update?
Yeah, this is an update that at our meeting two, uh, weeks ago, the Board, um, had members of the, uh, Planning Board here to talk about, um, yeah, the idea of bringing an inclusionary zoning, uh, for affordable housing bylaw to town meeting, where Planning Board, uh, wasn't gonna be having a meeting until their next one, which is this Thursday, March 12th, that we, uh, made available, uh, technical assistance from MAPC to work with them and their staff, uh, and we, we had, uh, a, as a follow-up, we had a, a working group meeting last week, uh, the notes of which we, uh, are included in the packet. Jenny Rate, uh, who worked on our housing production plan, was back here to facilitate that meeting. Jenny's report will be going forward to the, uh, Planning Board, uh, for its meeting on Thursday night, and I'd say it's, I wanted to report two things. First, Jenny recommended that, that the, um, a separate article on adoption of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund not come forward. At this point, she felt that, that there's a good deal of more work that you'd need to figure out before you could do that, but it's definitely something that we could bring to the fall special town meeting if we so chose. Um, and, uh, and secondly, that whether or not a, a zoning bylaw gets included in the warrant is something that the Planning Board, as a board, will be deciding this Thursday night, with this input from, um, from Jenny.
Anything from the Board?
Is the Planning Board ready to have a written bylaw for this meeting, coming for the town meeting?
They are, um, the, um, there is a timeline that is, uh, included in this packet, which, which would be one way that they could do it. Uh, we've set up, scheduled a tentative date of March, Friday, March 20, that morning, 8:00 AM, for, uh, the next meeting, when Jenny could be working with the, um, should the Planning Board decide this Thursday that they want to put a placeholder article in and give some further direction, the meeting on the 20th of March would be to firm up what the text of that bylaw is, the draft bylaw is, so that it could be the subject of a public hearing that would be noticed and conducted on, um, Thursday, April 9th. So, there is a timeframe within which they could do it, the Planning Board needs to decide if they can, um, meet that or not.
I do have a comment about that, and, you know, it's, it's only a couple months away, and I know we spend a lot of time saying, well, this is why they're, that we want to get to this right away, but, but there's two points I want to make. Number one, this should be subservient to the master plan, and the master plan should encompass all the planning efforts like this, um, and this shouldn't dictate what the master plan's gonna do. Secondly, is on town meeting floor, um, the wise people that attend that often look at something, and if it hasn't had the proper vetting, and it doesn't have the proper consensus, it's not going to pass. And there are... And there are some important things in here that we need to do, and I would hate to run the risk of having this thing not pass because we tried to push it too fast. I think this should wait. We have some time to address the 10% and some of the other issues, and we certainly, I don't think the townspeople would understand a breakneck pace at trying to get this implemented. So, it'd be my thought that we wait.
See, I agree. We asked Karina to provide us information when she briefed us last week, and she did, and it was wonderful. Plethora of information, as a matter of fact. She included eight towns, as we know, and we had that in our packet. I read the plans for each of those eight towns. Some range from a couple of paragraphs to one where it's a complete affordable housing plan, not a housing plan, but an affordable housing plan of 56 pages in length. And then, we find many different things in these towns. You know, the mention of a resale agent in one town, not in others. The number of houses, or the number of units that would be made susceptible to it as a percentage. One town, it's one out of eight, others it's 15%, others it's 10%. The size. And then, Maine, for example, goes down, and they talk about taking a home that could go down to less than 800 square feet if the developer would have built 15%. Now, these are recommendations for what we do in Littleton. I'm only saying that each of these individual towns found many different items out there that were important to them, and when they went through and built their own particular plan and bylaw, they addressed it that way. I would offer, I don't know that we've given that depth of thought. If the Planning Board has up to this point, super. I'm just unaware of it at this point. So, to Alex's point, I think there's a heck of a lot of work that goes into this, that certainly someone could write a bylaw, easily. Any one of us here tonight could put out a bylaw inside of an hour that would hit a bunch of important points. But as what we really want as a town, I would offer that, that's a negative. So, certainly, I would offer as our board's position is to suggest to the Planning Board that perhaps it's premature at this point, in that a bit more work needs to go into it before this sort of a town bylaw would be ready for prime time at a town meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I guess, I mean, I know that there was, we talked last time, and there was some urgency, you guys brought that up, and we want to get in front of it, but, you know, I don't have any concern with waiting and making sure it's fully vetted. I mean, to your point, if the Planning Board is already there, then that's another thing. But I guess it could go either way, if you're hesitant, I understand that.
No, I don't disagree with anything that the board has said at all. I think we all know that the amount of housing coming up, and what's gonna happen in the future, it's not, the 10% isn't something that's gonna happen overnight, I agree with that. And maybe, maybe we should actually wait on it, but we should realize that there's a real target out there that could hit us in 10, 15 years, that we don't want to see happen, happen on great road. I guess that's, and I guess that's why people have rushed to try to get it done. I understand that, too. But I would probably think, we probably should wait, too, and make sure we design it properly.
Absolutely worth pursuing, just done it properly.
It's a great idea. I just, if we pursue it, let's take the time it takes, and make sure the town meeting agrees with us, and they're comfortable with it. And that's one of my biggest concerns with this.
In the meantime, maybe when we work with developers and things, we can share with them our goal to, you know, have these certain, and maybe they voluntarily...
There's still a full plate of work to do, whether you go to May town meeting with zoning amendment or not. There's still an awful lot of work that needs to get done on this issue, and as I say, Jenny's recommending we take the time on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund part, and bring that to a fall town meeting. And if we, if we just set it aside and don't get back to it until, you know, a couple of weeks before the fall, that's not gonna work. It would need, we'd need to, you know, spend the time working on it between now and then.
This is Zilling, do you have it?
It was just a question. The last meeting where this topic came up, it was noted by a member of the Planning Board, very clearly that there's nothing, I believe, in our zoning regulation that accommodates, there's no, shall we say, including zone. So, in other words, it's, we're starting almost from, what, round zero? So, what I'm wondering about is whether or not any part of this can be opened up in town meeting, even if the details are not, no, in other words, just the zoning change required, and where, what inclusionary zones would there be? Is the Planning Board equipped to do that, in any time other than having, being pushed to do it?
I think the town meeting isn't necessarily the place to try to inform people from the start. When we get to town meeting, there has to be a lot of things already on the table, a lot of discussions that have already occurred, and forums that have occurred that get the true feedback, townspeople, town meeting floor isn't necessarily, my personal opinion, isn't necessarily the right place to do that. They should have a product that has been the product of a great deal of work and public input.
Mr. Chairman, and one of the places that is built into the process is the, that for any zoning amendment, whether it's brought forward in May or at a future town meeting, there's nothing that precludes the Planning Board from, they are required to have a public hearing under Chapter 48 zoning. So, if, so if it was decided that, that the Planning Board shouldn't bring anything to May, but they really ought to get started working on this, this project, they could do that by simply drafting, coming up with their best draft of a bylaw, hold a public, their public hearing on it, get community input as the starting point for that discussion. With, again, and if it's not on the warrant for May, then that public hearing is, could still be good to help inform a decision that gets made in the fall. It's a way to start.
That was the way I was gonna answer. That's really the point I was answering, is sort of like getting it going, that's all.
All right, does this board want to send a note to the Planning Board with our opinion?
It's useful.
Yeah, I'd say yes.
They're independent, but they'll go any way they wish, but at least, you know, sense of the Board of Selectmen, so to speak, somewhat like the sense of the Congress. Only with much more authority.
Oh, more sense than that.
Only with much more authority coming from Board of Selectmen.
Don't do me an style.
You have to start arguing a hell of a lot more, though.
So, can I be drafted some kind of...
Shouldn't I have a snowball by now?
Keith, we can draft up this a little bit.
Yeah, what I'm hearing is that the board would like the Planning Board to proceed with zoning amendments for inclusionary zoning, and then, I guess, the jury's out on which town meeting to bring that forward to. But it would be an important issue for them to study.
Board of Selectmen see the benefit of inclusionary zoning bylaw being worked on. We think putting it on the May town meeting, or May town meeting, is premature at this point.
Yeah, I think that's the right way to put it.
Okay. So, shall we read? Okay, five, Dean, master plan update. Mr. Vella, have you made a request?
I did, because, and Alex has hit the importance of this, is we had been spinning our wheels a little bit in getting more people to come in and volunteer to be on this. We decided as Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen that 12 members would be on the committee, or at six have confirmed at this point. Now, we have two more applicants, is that right, Keith?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, certainly, that would get us, we're over the quorum, if we can get everybody to show up. So, that's good news, and really, it's a plea to get more people to come out forward to this. As I said, Alex has hit the importance of this, other boards are certainly going out and asking people, and a lot of folks, obviously, you know, time is tight, but this is one that, I don't want to say be worked at leisure, but it'd be worked certainly with the appropriate sense of urgency, and that is given enough time, too, that we get the right information collected, we get the right people helping us out, you know, proverbial professionals, as you say, that we may want to engage through contract and have them do the grunt work for us, but it'd be the steering committee, by virtue of its name, the Steering Committee, helps steer that. But no one with the town would like, by working with various boards, by public meetings, having sessions, whether it's surveys, in other words, gathering the information, so it's not something that's just made, tossed over the tantrum, excuse me, in that, okay, company A, come up with a plan for us, and then we see how it works. We don't want to go down that route. So, we need more involvement from the folks in town, is what we're seeing at this point. And that's why I asked that we put it on the calendar tonight, on the agenda, is that we can make that plea, and certainly, the various boards in town, we'd mentioned that we want more people from them, and that we also want citizens at large. And we'd like to get it to a point where more people come forward that want to be on the board, and while they may not be on the particular Steering Committee itself, will be very useful, because there's certainly gonna be subcommittees of sorts or working groups that the Steering Committee will want to appoint, if appoints the correct word, or at least work with folks, to go out and collect that data and further information. So, the way to apply, town website, and right now, it's item number two, when you go to the main page, and it's the Master Plan Steering Committee. Please click on it, see what it says, give it some thought, and over the next couple of days, inundate Keith with more applications than he can possibly handle, please.
Does Hebert, you want to mention something?
I do, if I may. I totally echo what Paul's saying, and as I look at the, the members that are already on the team, I'm no stranger to kind of looking around the table at a team I'm on, working on a project, and finding myself the only younger female. And that's no problem, but when I do look at these participants, the thing that stands out to me is I am the only younger female. So, I'd really encourage, you know, folks to participate that are from, you know, that demographic, another thing to think about, I'm a single homeowner with no children. It'd be wonderful to have, you know, a mom on the team or something like that, so let's kind of mix up the participants a little bit. Please.
100%, and I'm the younger male on the group.
Mr. Drake?
You know, when I, when I wrote the little piece that I wrote about, you know, having to put the master plan ahead of the, ahead of the pack, you know, I looked at the master plan we currently have, and you consider its age and how much life has changed, the world has changed, it's an amazingly accurate document. And the reason it's that is because those little, what you just talked about, those little subgroups that formed, they went into entire areas, there was a tremendous amount of public input, and a lot of consensus building that went on. Where we went wrong was using it afterwards. But had we used that document from way back then, it would have steered us pretty much in the right direction, other than the world itself changed, and there are new things that it could not have foreseen at the time. This is a really important process for this town, so anybody that lives here, who wants to stay here in this town, and has a vision of what they think this community should be, this should be an important project for them, whether they're on the committee or not, to participate in.
The only thing I'd add is, do you think we should actually call out different boards? I mean, we have it down as other town board reps. I think we should, you know, call them out, so that they, they know that we're expecting, or at least the Board of Selectmen are expecting somebody to step up conservation, is one that I think is very important. You know, it just says other town boards.
Schools.
Schools, great, great, great point. I mean, you know, there's...
The Economic Development Committee.
There you go.
In fact, they're at our next meeting here, and we can break legs if necessary when they...
I'm just saying, you know, if they don't know, I mean, the other town boards is, you know, very broad, so. I would make a recommendation, we say, you know, and do we need the input of the Planning Board on this, or do we just make the decision? And see if the Planning Board agrees with our decisions.
It was a joint decision to establish the committee and structure it this way, joint meetings, but I, within the framework you have right now, if you wanted, if you, if you wanted to actively recruit folks from, from particular town boards and get their applications in, then when this board and the Planning Board meet and fill the vacancies, then you'll have the candidates there. So, I think you can work within that range.
I don't think the expertise of a particular, the expertise that's needed here, and I'm gonna give you some kudos for this, Mr. Knox, but when the government study committee did its work, it wasn't about the expertise that boards had and all that stuff, it was about building a process that was solid. And, and so, the people who belong in this committee are the ones that understand how to build a process, that will take the readings from the town accurately, and, and build a plan from, from that. And building the actual plan comes from the consultant. So, really, where, where these people are gonna, their role is best played, is in their ability to facilitate a broad range of people to participate in the process.
Anything further? I agree. Mr. Vella, anything else?
No, sure.
Okay.
Just a quick question. There is at the moment a scope of work, is that coming up, that all for discussion, or is that left out of the, is that not, is that simply a tentative, non-conclusive scope of work for the...
No, the, the board made a policy decision tonight to put additional funding...
Yeah, but I'm talking about the scope and how the money gets used. I want to know, is that discussion over? Or is not?
It hasn't been done.
It hasn't been done.
Like, if you're on the committee that's...
Hasn't even begun. The first discussion will be when the, when the Steering Committee, you and the rest of the Steering Committee, meet and discuss it.
That's tomorrow, right?
So, let us know. No, 48 hours notice, and you need two more people, you need at least one more person appointed.
Yeah, to address a little bit what you're saying there, Matt asked that we try to get some folks together, but with the quorum issue, be a social event otherwise, but to actually try and get the ball rolling in the right direction. Once we get these other two, and then we can actually get the meeting going, at least we'll get a good kickoff going.
So, if you are getting together, don't tell us about it, sorry.
All right, moving on, number six has to do with town meeting articles to insert on the warrant.
And I think that you've now, you've now voted it to do all of the articles that needed to be...
Was skipping inclusionary?
Yeah, we had, because, just looking at the list that's here, you put the snow and ice in, and especially, you put capital, we didn't talk about capital plan adjustments, we do need to talk about that. Special Town Meeting Article Four, this is a set of minor adjustments that are recommended by the Permanent Municipal Building Committee. They want to, they want to move some of the money around slightly, it's a total of, what's it, about $6,000 that gets moved out of the project for Shaker Lane, and would be used instead, I'm sorry, would be moved into Shaker Lane, and it would come from a middle school site article, and Russell Street School bus and parking lot. I don't know if Bonnie can talk about what those, or bills here, Bill Cole from PNBC. But these were some minor adjustments that PNBC wanted to do to the list of projects that were approved last year, and would require a town meeting vote to do that.
Is that the only one? There's two. I mean, articles.
Oh, yeah, that's the only one.
So, that, so that article you haven't voted on yet, and the rest of the articles you have all voted on?
Yep.
Yeah, so that's it. Is that the only remaining one?
You just need to... I don't know. I just don't have something to say.
Do you have anything to say, just?
No, it just made sense to do that, because it was money being spent for similar reasons at several different sites, and we felt it was, made much more sense to gather that money together and concentrate on one site. I mean, it's just much more cost-effective than having a contractor that wins the contract, doing a little bit at this school, a little bit at that school, a little bit here and there. So, that was the reason for moving it over.
Right, move that the Board of Selectmen vote to insert the following article onto the warrant, warrant of Monday, May 4, 2015, Special Town Meeting, with the form of said article to be subject to approval by Town Council. That would be Article Four, Board of Selectmen, FY 2015 Capital Improvement Plan Adjustments.
Second?
Moved in second, any discussion? All was a favor? Does oppose?
Thank you.
Seven A, Community Subject Banishment, states way back from last year, right?
I think 2013.
This is the... And Steve's still here. And Steve's still here. Bonnie said, yeah, if we can take Steve early.
I tried. Steve, I don't know if you want to just brief them on.
This is the project that the Board of Health, it's all Peter's fault, that the Board of Health brought us this Septic Loan Program article to town meeting a couple of years ago. A year ago, this board voted to submit the application to the state under their clean, Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, and we are asking for your authorization to enter into the loan documents with the trust that would fund the project.
Do we have the consent? No? I don't know how many we have at this point, but there's a company that handles a floor of the Board of Health that makes the decision. I think there was, wasn't it about nine, Barney?
I thought like nine, there were nine and eleven was the numbers that were thrown around the last time I spoke with them, so. They're qualifying the applicants and making sure that they met all the requirements. And we're at the point now, we, no work obviously has commenced, but we need to, we're at that point that we can start.
And this is just a form of the issue. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to pursuant Article Thirty of the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting to adopt the, the form of a vote prescribed by bond council, a copy of which is attached here to, and made part here of, relative to the issuance of bonds, in the amount of, in the amount not to exceed three hundred thousand for the repair replacement and/or upgrade of septic systems.
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed?
Thank you. There are some documents that do need to be signed before we leave.
Seven B, Staffing Plan with the Building Commissioner, the Board of Health, and the ZVA, including technician, zoning assistant, and business administrator, moving that person up to grade nine. We could put this up until after. Thanks for helping me today.
No problem.
Purpose of my being here is to request and, to ask the Board of Selectmen to approve a reorganization in my department, which involved the regrading of my administrative assistant, to better utilize her assets, which are, she has an engineering background, and she has a lot of building code background that I want to utilize off the field. In addition to that, I'd like to have her supervise a little bit more some admin that we have that come in from council on aging, and to utilize that aspect, because we are in a growth spurt, and I'd like to try to alleviate some of the stress in the department. So, in order to achieve that, I reevaluated and regraded, or rewrote the job description of my admin, and it was approved recently at the Personnel Committee, and that's why I'm here tonight.
The ZVA, the Board of Health, want to mention anything?
Well, basically, the, you know, when we first hired a person, when they, I don't know if everybody remembers, but this is a, we combined several functions into one admin. And there was a big cost savings there, but the, the problem is, I saw at the time, is when one board would get busy, all the rest of them get busy, and consequently, it's migrated into something where that person has to supervise other people and be responsible for a lot more than we had really had expected at the time. So, I think this is a real good move to do it this way. I think that the concept was great, I just don't think that the, the salary grade went with the actual job, if you will. Now, I don't know if that explained it pretty good, but...
I think Michelle is one of the finest assets that this community has. She has excelled in every job that we've given her, she has gone above and beyond the call of duty. I've had experienced legal secretaries that don't know half as much as Michelle has assimilated and taken on in her role, and I think she's well-suited for promotion, and then to supervise more clerical staff types to do some of the lesser jobs, just to get everything done and get it done most efficiently. But it would be a shame to lose this asset.
Anyone remember?
The Personnel Board's been quite a bit on this. The job description is well-written, and lengthy, and thorough, and we went back and forth, and we were certainly convinced in the quality of, of the entire process, but in particular what Roland wanted to do, and his willingness to document it carefully.
Anyone else? Budget-wise?
Sure. This was, this was presented to me as part of maybe a succession plan for the department, and to be able to develop the, the existing staff and, and bring them up to the level that, that needs to be, they need to have certifications, they need to have additional field training. That process needs to start early on, and we're looking at a five to seven-year, you know, window, and it's about five years just to get the certification, from what the research that I've done. So we looked at it from that perspective. There is a cost to the increase in grade from a six to a nine, it's about forty-eight hundred dollars a year. Currently, the proposal here would, would not impact the general fund budget, and what we're proposing is that the incremental increase of forty-eight hundred be taken out of the building inspector's revolving account. Now, the revolving account is used to pay the, the wiring, the gas inspectors, and their alternates. The fees that are associated with those inspections go into that account. The fees are set at a rate such to capture ten percent to be used as needed if, if the use becomes required. But to date, there's been forty thousand dollars accumulated in the balance, in the account that's unencumbered. I looked at, you know, what would it generate going forward with the current fee structure that we have, and it generates somewhere between five and seven thousand dollars, I think, annually, depending on the activity in the town, depending on how many permits that we're issuing. Right now, we're on the high side, about seven, eight thousand dollars. On the low years, it's about five thousand dollars. So this would be a sustainable model if we're paying that incremental increase out of the revolving account going forward. So it could be done with no impact on the budget, as long as the fees are monitored and maintained to, to capture that.
Anyone else? Roland, your supervision is, you're going to be supervising her still?
I still supervise her.
And do you import the other boards, are they going to have any say in it?
They always have say in it.
Yeah. And just on that point, that it was a three-party agreement between the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, and the Zoning Board of Appeals that initially allowed us to fill this joint position a couple of years ago, so what we're doing now is the form of, that you're being asked to do is to approve an amendment to that agreement, which in essence substitutes this new job title for the old one. And all of the other conditions will be the same, it'll be, you know, supervised by the Building Commissioner with, with input from the, from the two boards.
To, to answer Jim's question, it's something that's worked very well, I, in my estimation, the, it, it has been very positive having Roland there, it's, it's really been good.
Great. Ready? Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to execute Amendment Number One to the July 11, 2011 Memorandum of Agreement, MOA with the Board of Health, the Zoning Board of Appeals, to approve the exception of the staffing vacancy review policy to allow the filling instead of it by internal posting of a full-time forty-hour-per-week zoning assistant slash permit technician slash business administrator to shared, to be shared by the Building Commissioner, Board of Health, the Zoning Board of Appeals, set forth in the MOA.
Second.
Move to the second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Seven C, Conflict of Interest Law Determination, Town Employee Financial Interest in a Second Municipal Contract, which has happened periodically.
It's a request from the school superintendent, which requires approval of the Board of Selectmen under the Conflict of Interest Law. Aware that there are also issues regarding as to, as to what the rate of pay is that the employee would be paid. That is the subject of Fair Labor Standards Act, which is, which could come down one of two ways, either that it's not a problem, or that it is a problem. And when I say it is a problem, that it, that if there's a, if there are overtime restrictions that come from that. But there's no, there's no impediment to the Board of Selectmen voting to adopt a, the form of this motion, if you want to let the...
Anything you want to comment on?
I've talked to Mike Corry about it, it'll be done in his off-duty time, or he'll arrange if it does impact his shifts, there won't, in other words, there won't be any time that he's, he's working for me and working for the schools. I'll cut it short, and we'll, you know, we'll monitor it, and personally, I think it's a great thing that police officers coaching within the school systems, and I would encourage it if we can make it happen.
So can, can I go back to the fair labor, wages and labor stuff? Where, where do we think we're going to be with that?
Well, it, it may be that the, the hours worked in the coaching environment have to be paid at a blended overtime rate, which would incorporate his hourly rate as a police officer, as well as what an hourly rate would equate to as the coach, depending on what the stipend is by the number of hours in the, in the season. We are waiting for some additional clarification on that, but that may be, you know, the financial impact of him coaching, and that would be something that the school department would, with the superintendent, would need to make a decision on whether that's something they want to pay.
The school would pay, I would not.
Mr. DeCose?
I did a little bit of research on this because the whole conflict of interest thing impacted my son, who was working for the athletic department, doing the clock at basketball games, and doing the announcing at hockey games and that kind of thing. He was also working for the theater, and he was told there's a conflict of interest in the rate of pay and all that kind of stuff, so I believe that issue is being worked on, and then I heard about this, this instance with Mike Corry having an opportunity to coach across the team at the high school. I did some research on my own, I happen to know personally eight hockey coaches in the MIAA, in the state of Massachusetts, that are, one's a police chief, several are, there's a couple sergeants, and there's several patrolmen, that are paid a stipend from the community to be a coach, it doesn't conflict with their, their on-duty duties, and it's, it's being done by other communities. There's no, no issues, no problems, I've reached out to a couple of them, they said they get their stipend, and there's never been an issue.
Bonnie?
There are some, there are many communities that are doing it that way, I would completely agree with you. We have received information from the Department of Labor, and regarding Fair Labor Standard Act requirements, there are few communities that are actually adhering to the laws. We are one of them, that, I mean, we know what the law is, we need to, to try and comply with it. There are some enforcement audits that are going on now in other communities, and they've been caught, and you have to pay damages and back wages as a result of these things. So we're trying to be proactive and get these addressed before they're appointed, and, and just make sure that we're not going to get any compliance issues. For, for an example, you know, a stipend that might be valued at twenty-one hundred dollars, might have to be paid out with the blended overtime rate at thirty-nine hundred dollars. So it's, I mean, it's almost...
Be a time and a half?
Yeah.
So twenty-one and a half to thirty-three?
So it's...
So we're talking about a thousand dollars?
We took a couple of thousand dollars.
Couple thousand dollars, sure, great.
And this, this is not new, we've been going through this at the Personnel Board, is, one by one, as these things are pointed out to us, it isn't, this isn't the first time we've come across this. And we either comply with the law, or we deliberately not comply with the law, and we're aware of what the law says, we'd better comply with it.
I think, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think there are opportunities to work within the law. I think we just need to research that and find out what it is. Obviously, other communities are doing it, I, maybe they aren't, some of them are doing it below the law, beside the law, beneath the law, I'm not sure. But, I mean, one of, one of these individuals is a police chief, I'm sure he's not going to jeopardize his own career, but...
Well, to be honest, most people aren't aware until it's brought to their attention.
I brought it to all their attention.
And that's, wow, you may have created a firestorm.
No, I don't think I did, because they said that, well, we're not going to give it to them, but it's, I think there's an opportunity to be able to do this. I'll, I'll talk from my own, my own experience with my son, where he was working for Mike Lynn, making a, a set wage to do basketball games and hockey games. A job that Mike couldn't find anybody to, to fill it, so my son and a couple of kids at the high school said, yeah, we'll do it. And create opportunity for them, they were going to go to the game, so it was a win-win. My son also works for the theater, making whatever, ten bucks an hour for Mike to know, whatever it is. And he was basically punished, and told that he was knocked down from wage of twenty-five dollars a game down to minimum wage for doing hockey games and basketball games. He agreed to do the job for twenty-five dollars an hour, so there's a whole different thing that I'm not going to, I already did...
Twenty-five dollars a game?
Twenty-five dollars per game, to either run the clock, or do the announcing of the clock, or the scorekeeper at, at the hockey games, and then he gets his, his hourly wage, whatever that happens to be, from the theater department, when we rent out the theater for, you know, that's all subsidized by the rental fees. But he, he was told he had to give one of them up because it was a conflict of interest, and that's, the superintendent is working, this issue goes beyond just the coaching thing, it's something that I think that we need to work through on behalf of the kids at the high school that want to work, on behalf of municipal employees that want to volunteer their time and, and reach out to the kids, talk about our community outreach program. If Mike Corry's interacting with kids at the high school, what a tremendous impact that could have on those kids. I just, I, there's, I know there's a way to do it, I just hope that you guys are able to find it.
Yeah, there's, there's two issues. There's conflict of interest law, which this board can give absolute, you can give, you can grant indulgences here, that, that your vote on that is binding, and it solves that issue. There's, while we can debate what the Fair Labor Standards Act is tonight, we don't, none of us in this room ultimately rule on it, and it's, you know, it's, you're, you're proceeding in good faith, and you do what's best.
When you're talking about small towns, this, you know, it's, it's, as, as Mr. DeCose said, you, you can't find people to fill these things, and it's something that has to be broken. It's doable, it's a matter of getting everybody at the table, along with town council, to make it done, and I think that's where we got to go with this. But it's absolutely doable, without any fear of Labor Standard Act or breaking any laws. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter Two, Sixty-Eight A, Subsection Twenty-B, to approve the disclosure filed by municipal employer Michael Corry concerning a financial interest in the second municipal contract.
Second.
Move to the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Those opposed? Now, before we go into executive session...
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve meeting minutes from Board of Selectmen meeting February 2015.
Second. Move to the second, all is in favor? Those opposed? Yep. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter Thirty-Eight, Subsection Twenty-One A, Clause Three, to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to, collect a bargaining with the towns' unions, since an open meeting may be detrimental to the effect of the bargaining, position of the board in not convening an open session thereafter. Call.
Aye.
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 Move Jam in the, in the absence of Fred, when Finn comes ask me to sit down, listen. And thank you all for watching, we are going to executive session, and vote reopen in public session. Thank you. Thank you.